That's why, you know, what's the fact of the question? The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chuck, can you please take your roll? Mayor Kenny? Here. Councilmember Cody?
Here.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Woodland?
Here.
Councilmember Duster?
Here.
Intern City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
DPW Director?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Public Safety Director?
Here.
City Engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments and agenda-related items. Is there anyone in attendance who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda? None, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items start with an asterisk around the consent agenda considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: approval of minutes, approval of payroll, cash balances report, third quarter financial report, third quarter investment report, notification regarding special meeting, the next work session, consideration of poll claiming site voting week, consideration of Manistee Lions Club white cane sale, and consideration of the USS Liberty plaque dedication banner request.
I'll make a motion and the council will take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodsky, supported by Councilmember Cody, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Can you please take your roll? Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodland?
Yes.
Councilmember Duster?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of council committee appointments. There are currently vacancies on the Alternatives for Area Youth Board and the Manistee Recreation Board. It's time, Mayor, to take action to make various council committee appointments. I'd like to appoint Councilmember Zelinski to the MRA Board, and I'd like to appoint Mayor Pro Tem Smith to Alternatives for Area Youth. I don't believe those need... Next, we'll move on to the consideration of MSDDA budget for fiscal year 2015 and 2016. Manistee Main Street Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors approved the 2015-16 fiscal year budget at their meeting of April 27, 2015, to be presented to City Council. The Board is now requesting that City Council approve the budget as presented. City Code of Ordinance Number 282.09B requires that the MSDDA submit their annual budget to council by the same date that the city budget is required by term to be approved, which is May 15. Is there a motion to approve the Main Street Downtown Development Authority's budget?
At this time, I make a motion, council, to take action to approve Main Street Downtown Development Authority 2015-2016 fiscal year budget.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Smith, supported by Councilmember Goodsky, to approve the Main Street Downtown budget. Is there any discussion, comment, questions? Patrick Kay is here, if there's any questions. C9, can you please take your roll? Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Duster?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodland?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of utility service agreement with West Shore Medical Center. West Shore Medical Center owns and operates a medical office building at 315 Oak Grove Street in Manistee Township. West Shore has expressed interest in having their property served by city water and sewer services due to a failing septic system. The city attorney has prepared and approved the agreement under consideration. Is there a motion to enter into the agreement?
At this time, I recommend council take action to enter into an agreement with West Shore Medical Center to provide water and sewer service to 315 Oak Grove Street and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Smith, supported by Councilmember Zelinski, to approve the agreement with West Shore Medical Center. Is there any discussion? Can you please take your roll? Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Duster?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodland?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zelinski?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Let's move on to consideration of a contract for the repainting of the Maywood Water Tower. The city water towers are inspected every five years by Dixon Engineering. Dixon recommends the Maywood Tower be overcoated and sealed to extend the life of protective coating. Eight beds were received, the lowest bed withdrawn due to a clerical error. Dixon has recommended awarding the bed to the second-low bidder. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the contract. Is there a motion to award the contract?
I'll make a motion, council, to take action to award the contract to industrial painting in the amount of $139,800 and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute that contract.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Duster, supported by Councilmember Goodsky, to approve the contract to industrial painting in the amount of $139,800.
Just one point of information, if I may. I want to be clear that the sunset stain on the tank would be painted over, the paint would be white, and there would be a city logo on it. Just wanted to be sure, let it be clear on that. Just to make sure that's clear. Yes, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? I just, there is such a wide range of the bids, just to be clear that they all bid on the same package with the same...
Excellent.
That's a question. And Jeff, do you have any concerns or any comments you'd like to make?
The entire bid package was put together by Dixon Engineering, was publicly bid. The engineers weren't real surprised to see the wide range. They usually see a small cluster that fits into contractors of where they're working, the timeframes, the schedule, so they were pretty pleased at the low bid. The actual little bidder that withdrew his bid got confused and used the square footage of our industrial tank for his bid, which is a lot less than the Maywood one. Once he realized that error, asked to have it withdrawn, so we withdrew it, but we're still quite behind our budget.
Okay. Any other questions, Council? Thank you, Jeff. Can you please take your roll? Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodland?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Duster?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Let's move on to consideration of refuse contract extension with Public Waste. The current contract with Public Waste expires June 30, 2015. Discussion with Public Waste has resulted in a five-year contract extension, as prepared and approved by the city attorney. The agreement includes a rate increase of 0% in the first year and 2% thereafter. It also includes a new program that would allow one bulky item per customer per month during the first collection week of the month. The charge would be $740 per month to the city with no additional cost to the customer. City administration recommends approval of this contract extension. Recycling will continue to be a subject of discussion by council in the future.
I'll make a motion, that council take action, to approve a five-year contract extension with Public Waste from July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodsky, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Smith, to approve the five-year contract extension. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, can, just for clarification for the public, the $740 a month, or the, what's kind of the bulky item per month? Can we explain that a little further?
Be happy to. At the first collection of each month, whether that's a Thursday on May 1 or a Monday on the 5th, for example, each customer could put out one bulky item. Bulky item is not defined in the text of the contract, except during discussions, we talked about things like a couch, for example, or a table, or chairs. So, one big item that you don't want to store in your garage for the next six, eight, 10, 12 months, once a month you could put that out, and the hope is that that would reduce our volume in the spring trash hall come 2016, and in fact, those savings would be used to pay for it. There would be no additional cost to the customer for that additional service. That $740 would be billed to the city. The city would pay it out of the combined fee income that we receive from the customers and from the tax levying that we receive from the taxpayer.
So this would be in addition to the twice-a-year, or once every two-year major pickup?
That's the current plan. If this works out exceptionally well, that may cause us to rethink whether or not that spring trash hall is necessary or desirable, but the current thinking is that it would be in addition to rather than replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Would there be any items not accepted?
The typical freon-related items, for example, refrigerators are treated separately and specially.
Tires.
Tires are treated separately and specially, and there's a few batteries are separate and different, but aside from those exceptions that most people are aware of, it would include any bulky item.
And how would we get that information out to our customers?
We're working on that with the Solid Waste Company, and them putting out information, we would put out information, we would likely include some ads in the news ad okay, and hopefully word of mouth after people start seeing the bulky item out there. How do you do that? And it's likely to take a couple of months, and it will not become effective until July 1, but the working expectation is that the word will spread quickly.
And this will go through the entire year?
Yes.
Even though...
And it's included in the entire five-year contract, so regardless of what happens with spring trash hall next year or the year after, the service would be in that five-year contract.
Okay, thank you.
How about building materials? I mean, it's... Building materials are not included. And I think the working assumption there is that if you're undertaking a significant building project, the cost of material disposal should be part of the cost of your project. If it's a miscellaneous two-by-four, then you just put that in with weekly collection, cut it up to appropriate lengths, but if you've got an accumulation of material from a building project, then that's your responsibility along with the rest of the costs of that building project.
I was thinking about just some asphalt shingles, you know, people have a square laughter.
If there's relatively small and confined quantities like that, I would expect them to be included.
Okay, thank you.
A pile of building debris, I would not expect to be included.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Can you please take your roll? Councilmember Woodland?
Yes.
Councilmember Duster?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to notices, communications, and announcements. A rather part of each council meeting is reports from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear a report from the Alliance for Economic Success.
I am not tampering with my... I am glad to be here tonight and see you all again for the first time this year. I want to also introduce Bob Waybuckler and Alan Marshall, who are members of the Board of Directors of the AES that are with us here tonight. My purpose is really to briefly update all of you on a presentation I believe you heard in March, and also lay some groundwork for an updated work plan for the AES in the As we, I'm sure we mentioned in March, the AES probably has three missions having to do with business and job development, community development, and resource development, and we have three people in the office that are focal points for each one of those areas. To give you brief updates on each one of those, because it relates to the city of Manistee. In the area of business development, I won't read all of this to you, but we've got an interesting mix of initiatives that we're working on. I have an issue on one end with a patent-pending product where we have a major, actually Michigan's oldest, four-year university involved in helping the inventor understand how to scale this product up and manufacture in Manistee to a project that would get involved with secondary processing of locally grown foods. Another project involving aquaculture here within the city. Importantly, and one that I hope all of you will take an interest in, an active role in, is will be beginning soon a process of helping the manufacturing strategy for county. And that strategy will involve manufacturers, we've met with them, they strongly endorse the project, but it'll also involve not only traditional manufacturing, but will also get into food manufacturing, value-added processing, and that project will be kicking off later this month. Other business and job development initiatives we have underway in the county, forage plan, we had a great meeting last week with the community on that plan, which created 100 new jobs. Some of you joined in the ribbon cutting, I know the mayor did, at the new mire in Manistee Township, which created 270 jobs, 25% of which are full-time jobs. And we even are working with a distillery that by this time next year should be in full operation in northern Manistee County. So we've got a mixed bag of things. I also want to mention two other things that are significant to Manistee, the city of Manistee. We're working with an existing and longtime manufacturer in the city that is interested in doubling its size, and he has all the work to do that, and it's just a process of going through and linking himself with the resources and the right people to do that. So we're very optimistic that we'll have something more firm to talk about soon on that project. Another initiative that we have been principally involved with, which I think is significant, is bringing Baker College to Manistee County. Baker College is the oldest private nonprofit four-year university in the state of Michigan. They have a rate of 97% of their students step into jobs in business, and their primary focus is business. They do a lot of occupational training, and a long story short, they are now teaching classes here in Manistee County, using facilities at MCC in the evening, and they will also be teaching classes this summer at MCC, and so we think that that is a great addition to the county and one that students will take advantage of. In the area of community development, again, things, new things that are impacting the city, many of you probably already participated in the countywide recreation plan, where all the local governments in the county are partnering and agree to participate. That would give us enormous leveraging capacity to develop funding for projects. We are also in the beginning stages of a US 31 corridor plan that would track from Filer through the city of Manistee, at least up into and through Manistee Township. We will be reconvening your harbor commission at some point in the next couple of months to update their strategic plan that we helped facilitate last year. And we're also working with, this is the time of year where we meet with a lot of funders and outside interests, and recently, we've met with USDA Rural Development, the Office of US Senator Debbie Stavino. We'll be meeting soon with Michigan Economic Development Corporation, Department of Transportation, and the Economic Development Administration. I'm going to add that our primary focus this year in meeting with the federal and the state departments is on capital approvals, and we look forward to supporting the city in that regard as well. Resource development, which is the area that I primarily focus on, we are nearing approval of a $700,000 loan application that we submitted on behalf of the Both Theater that will improve their cash flow, reduce their monthly debt service. We're working for multiple sources, and I think late this afternoon, we finally figured it out, to secure funding to develop a viable business strategy for the Ramsdale Theater. We are all, I was also informed earlier today that we will be receiving grant funding from United States Partnership for Agricultural and Rural Development to support funding for our manufacturing strategy. There's a new initiative in Manistee County called Launch Manistee, which is aimed at fairly very important goals involving early childhood as well as access to college and two-year certificates. Our office has been a primary organization that has raised funding for Launch Manistee. We're also seeking funding for a new initiative that corresponds to your strategic plan with Network Northwest to develop a comprehensive, development-ready housing strategy for the area, and that is a very badly needed thing for Manistee County. We simply do not have the places to live for the workers that we need to hire. So, looking ahead, we, people have been appointed, I think both at the city and the county level, and sort of the AES Board, to begin discussions on a new work plan with the city. One of the things that we do not have, that we have had every year since 2007, when the AES began facilitating your strategic plan, is a completed strategic plan that laid out what your expectations were for the AES. So whether we complete that plan immediately or not, what we would like to do is revisit with you the goals and objectives for economic development that are in your existing plan and update those where necessary as part of that process. So, we look forward to supporting your strategy going forward. Any questions?
Thank you, Tim. I appreciate all the work. There's a lot of projects you guys work on. It's usually mainly under the radar, and I don't think people really appreciate the amount of time it takes from start to finish on all these projects that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll move on to concerns and comments, citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anyone who'd like to comment? Please state your name and address.
Carol Pascal at 6th and Swooth Street. I just sort of had a question about the recycling program. Is the negotiating that's going on something that will apply to, can be applied to the current contract for five years, or is that something that won't happen for another five years?
No.
Because the way it's stated, I wasn't sure exactly what it meant. I know you can't answer questions, but it just said it will continue to be a subject of discussion in the future. Does that mean five years?
No, I think we're working, would be working on that recycling contract. We just didn't want to hold up the refuse contract, but we do plan on...
You could have a separate...
Right, and we would roll that over into the recycling, or into the refuse contract. Is there any other comments or questions? Let's move on to officials and staff. Councilmember Cody?
Yes, it's good to see the water. We've got the bulldozer down there, and it's flowing down those big dutes over there, so that's looking good. Thank you.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Duster?
Nothing.
Councilmember Woodland?
Just a couple things. Just wanted to thank Chief Bachman and his crew, plus the sheriff and the sentine, or I believe it was the sentine, for quick work on the drive-by shooting.
Yes, sir.
Taking care of him, getting that off the streets. Thank you very much. And a little shout-out to Matt and Lindsay Saworski, the new owners of Ramsdale Inn and TJ's Pub. Thank you for putting your confidence in downtown Manistee. And the last one is the recycle center at the city garage. I was there the other day, Saturday, and I know we talked about this before, but people leaving paint cans and miscellaneous crap there again. We're going to lose it if you, if that continues, so please stop.
Councilmember Duster?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Let's be clear.
Election's still going on, but there's nobody, anybody in this building until 8:00.
Intern City Manager?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Public Safety Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
DPW?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Finance Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
I have nothing, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I will not be there next week, because I'll be out of town. It's a few days.
Okay.
And I'll make that motion. And I'll second tomorrow.
Down towards the bottom of the hill, there's a lot of double mains that serve the homes down there, so we're going to be...
In the office, with conversations or clarifications with the finance director and myself, but collectively, we've noted three substantive changes to the budget as directed by the city council. The first was to change the part-time position in the clerk preservers' office to a full-time position, accomplished by tightening up some of the parameters in the police department budget based on our newer information regarding promotions there, and delaying the start date of that new position by three months. The second substantive change has been to increase the funding for the street program from $417,000 per year, not per year, for the anticipated budget, to $500,000 for the forthcoming budget, that accomplished by adding $83,000 in a transfer from the oil and gas interest earnings. For the third substantive change that we've noted is to modify the water and sewer rate increase, deferring a portion of that rate increase for one year, so that it would be 6% effective July 1, 15, and again, the 6% July 1, 16. So, those are the substantive changes that we as staff have made in the budget. You haven't seen those new pages yet, pending the outcome of today's discussion, but our expectation would be that those changes, plus any additional changes you would like to make tonight, would be reflected in a revised document that you would get with your agenda packet in anticipation of a special meeting one week from tonight to adapt the budget. And the final point is, I would remind the council that the charter regarding budget adoption by May 15, one week from tonight, is May 12, so if for whatever reason, adoption couldn't occur on the 12th, then we would need a subsequent special meeting either Wednesday or Thursday of next week in order to meet that charter deadline. Tonight's purpose is really to give the council one more opportunity. The reason I hesitate on council is because some are commissions in your council, and sometimes I have to check myself on which is the right analogy. I apologize. Tonight's purpose is to give one more chance for the council to take a look at the budget, raise any additional questions, make any additional changes you would like to make, and basically, one more opportunity for discussion of the subject.
You guys, I feel, you guys produce us...
I have a question about the water rate increase.
Okay.
Is, if we go six and six, is that going to punish where we need to be so we're not happy to borrow money? Does that, is that going to work? Okay?
As we indicated a week ago or two weeks ago, there may be some short-term cash flow issues that may require some internal borrowing, but that would be a cash flow issue more than an actual financial problem. If it develops into more than that, we would come back to the council with that information and recommend a solution at that time. We don't expect it to be an issue.
Another question, just for my information, water rates, sewer rates, can they be adjusted to roll for here?
Yes.
And just, we made no changes in our capital budget funding, correct, in the projects that we're going to do?
Correct. The only exception would be the additional funding for the street projects with the project to be accomplished yet undetermined. That would come back to you as part of a bid package sometime in the future.
Because we have the way signings can hard monitor...
All of those remaining.
Okay.
At this juncture.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns about the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
The DPW, we talked about having an assistant director.
Yes.
For Jeff Kukula. Wondering about that, we're going to be taking somebody out of the work pool to appoint to that position?
Yes, but also backfilling that position, so we end up with net additional bodies Yes, but also backfilling that position, so we end up with net additional bodies in the labor force. I believe the numbers were, if we take what is currently 20% admin and 80% labor, take that position and turn it into effectively management, we would backfill with another body and gain that 20% that's currently being deviated to admin. So, we would backfill but end up with more FTE in both positions, labor and management.
What, how many people are we talking, bringing in, bringing in younger blood to the, to the work pool?
At this juncture, that would be one additional FTE, however, we have a number of retirements pending. I don't know the exact count, but the current expectation is that we would replace all of those positions, whether they're young, middle-aged, or older, I certainly can't tell you, but...
New blood, I should say.
New blood.
New blood, I'm sorry about that.
The expectation is we would backfill all of them.
And then the hiring process, then you may be, you know, out, you know, retired fully.
Hopefully.
But the plan, when a, when a person retires out of DPW, is to have somebody immediately come in, or are we going to be short-changed with the workforce again?
There's a fairly extensive process, particularly depending on where that vacancy occurs, and it often involves having to post a position for internal applicants, posting it for other city employees before you can actually post it for outside retention, so it can be a fairly extended process, much of that dictated by union contracts, but the expectation is that we would go through that as expeditiously as possible to backfill based on the fact that all of those positions are currently in the budget. If at some future point a position wasn't in the budget, then it would be a different answer.
When we fill those, is there typically enough time, given that when they're going to retire, that you could bring somebody on before the retirement or training?
That likely would not occur and likely would not be necessary because they're part of a larger crew. If it was a single-person position, there might be an advantage to some training period, but with DPW labor, I really wouldn't see that, and there wouldn't be a budgetary allocation for that necessarily.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Not this time. There were a couple of...
Mayor Potem Smith? Anything else? Things are good.
Things are good. Thank you.
Thank you. Sit down. Any other questions?
Well, I don't have any questions about that. What's up? Bring it up. So I just want to see the Parks Commission somehow. Oh, next thing, are we doing anything with Sands Park to share with you, baseball diamond? We can spend money. Sands Park. Mr. Bro.
Yeah, we're planning on purchasing some nitrogen dust and upgrading the infield this year. We're bad in, in Rockin Park. More than part, we're working with the Parks Commission, I believe wants to do Rocket Park as a structure and get some of the equipment that's in the Rocket Park.